...and we'll start with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion for the approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda?
Second. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Looking for an approval of open session minutes from September 12th, 2016. With the motion to approve the minutes from September 12th, 2016.
Second.
Any discussion? Sorry, I was reading. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, approval of executive session minutes from September 12th, 2016.
I think those have to be tabled for next session.
Okay, because we haven't received them yet. Okay. Open for community comments.
Hi, my name is Kate Francie. I have a son that's in the first grade at Memorial Elementary. And the after-school program is completely full and there's no hope of having any openings anytime soon. In the meantime, I've been having to have my mom transport him to Wynton Community Center. So I'm just wondering, this is just a concern for my family, just because, you know, we chose to be living up to it because the school system is so good. And, but the problem is, is that me working full-time, my husband working full-time, it's very difficult to kind of get him to Wynton Community Center. So I guess I'm just wondering if there's going to be a chance to have openings, if, you know, I just felt like this would be the place to bring it up.
Sure, thank you. I know we discussed that, one of our last school committee meetings, and we were talking about, you know, other options. Did anything arise?
There was, we've started some initial conversations with the town of Upton, looking at the old church in town as potential space, additional space, for either both of before and after-school program. But right now, that's just in preliminary stages. I would ask, contact my office, you know, tomorrow morning, perhaps sometime, and we can discuss about your particular situation, you know, in detail. But we are looking at every type of creative solution possible.
Okay, thank you for bringing that up.
Hi, my name's Edward Burke. I'm one of the family members impacted by this situation. And my question is, there's a waiting list of 10 students, at least, for this program. And I was wondering, at what number does it become feasible to create another section? You know, it's not that my grandson is a one-off here. There are a significant amount of students that are impacted by this situation. And I was wondering if it's been thought about to open another classroom and create another section? Because it is a pay-as-you-go kind of situation and would be potential revenue generating for the district. So that was just my concern, that has any thought been, you know, made to open another classroom within the school system itself?
I couldn't give you a definitive answer, sir, you know, to say, okay, we need 15 students and so on, because honestly, I haven't done a cost analysis of it. I think with regard to the space, realize our, the space that we have in place here at the middle school for the after-school program is dedicated strictly for that. We generally do not use teachers' classrooms, per se, for either the before-school or the after-school program. I think, again, we're going to look at all creative possibilities, including possibly something not within the schools, within the town of Upton. You know, we do realize that families are being impacted. We do realize that there's a demand there, and actually, the demand is actually even stronger for the before-school program than it is the after-school program. So, you know, we hope to have some type of creative solution within the next month or so.
Great.
But please, please give me a call so we can talk about your specific situation.
So related to that, so Memorial has a before and after-school program. Where do they, where is that hosted out of?
There are two classrooms that they've been used in the kindergarten wing.
Okay.
When we had to cut one of our traditional classes, I was able to give the second class, classroom to Lana for her program, with the understanding that if our numbers increased,
That we would need to take that room back.
I would be taking that space back. So they use those two classrooms, as well as our computer lab and our gym, in the library.
Okay. What, what kind of space do we have at Clop? Or do we not have any additional space?
We don't have space at Clop. We use actually, here at Misco, the space that's adjacent to little learners.
Yep.
For, for the most part, mending kits. I think there's a handful of Upton kids in there as well.
Okay. I was just curious, mostly because I've never utilized the program and didn't know exactly how it operated.
Unfortunately, I don't have any extra classrooms at all.
Yeah.
Their school is much larger, which is why they have, you know, two extra classrooms.
Yeah, yep.
But I don't even have a single extra classroom, because I wanted to do that years ago when I started to have it at my school. That's why they decided, there's one in Mending and there's one in Upton.
Yep. Yeah, I mean, I can clearly see spaces are issue.
Initially, it was for both schools. It was here when I started.
Okay.
And then we cut a halftime pre-K, which opened up a classroom in kindergarten.
And then the kindergarten classroom.
So we moved to kindergarten classrooms. We were able to move part of our students to Upton.
Okay.
And I don't, I don't have, I mean, I have teachers sharing classrooms in the regular part of the school. So they, I can't have any more classrooms taken by the after-school program.
Yeah, this absolutely seems like a space issue.
Yeah.
And just trying to identify space outside of this. But obviously, it's a well-utilized program, which is fabulous, which says a lot.
Yeah, this year, we just, you know, as I reported, I think it was back at the August 12 meeting, we just got slammed this year for some...
Yeah, like high interest and, it's a good program.
Maybe it's more...
It's a great program, and it's needed.
More people going out into the workforce. I mean, honestly, I don't know what it is, but, you know, it made its way to my desk towards the end of July, particularly with demand for the before-school program. And Lana does a fantastic job running it. I think when we get into these high-demand areas, we really have to look at, you know, the policies and procedures that are put in place, you know, as far as determining who's in the program, and then wait lists, and things of that nature. So, but like I said, we will look at every creative solution, you know, to meet our family's needs.
Yep. Sometimes it's like peace feeling it together.
Yeah, and as we, you know, discussed, it is, it is a little bit of a tough hire. And again, you know, I know your attention is the after-school. We're lucky, we've got a lot of terrific Nipmuck students working it. The before-school, though, finding, you know, kind of the...
Those are tough hours.
The responsible mom slash grandma type to staff that, you know, to have kind of those I-type hours. It's a bit of a challenge.
Yeah, I could see that, definitely. Well, thank you for voicing your concerns.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along to superintendent comments.
All right, well, good evening. First off, just as an update, I, I'm bringing to your attention, and this is something that hasn't been finalized, but a gentleman who lives in Upton by the name of Gregory Marsinek, recently purchased a lot of land, approximately 20 acres, on West River Street that is adjacent to where the Nipmuck athletic fields are. And Greg is a builder, and he's planning on putting two homes on that land. And in the process, in kind of working with some folks in the town, he realized some of the work that had been done over the last two years with the turf field feasibility study. So it's kind of a win-win situation. He is proposing that he donates 7.5 acres, a parcel of land that's adjacent to, it's approximately where the softball and baseball fields are, okay? Donating it to the regional school district right now is slated to go before the zoning board of appeals. To be candid, the majority of this land probably is not buildable, probably, or usable for fields. Majority of the land probably is wetlands. However, it would be useful, because A, it would be a buffer from our fields, and B, should we look to do some type of project moving forward with the fields, and we needed to have some type of wetlands abatement project, that would be usable for that. So, I put that on your radar screen. Once that becomes finalized, I will be certain to put it before the committee. But I do plan on reviving the field turf study committee. We will be meeting on October 12th at 7:00 PM. You're more than welcome to attend. To look at all different types of options, if you recall, in the winter-spring of '15, when Gale Associates did the study, they came up with a comprehensive project that would build two turf fields and also relocate some of our fields. So I think there's an interest from some of our high school parents, members of the Warriors Club, I know Chris and John, of looking at all different options. I think we got the large comprehension, comprehensive option, but what are some other options moving forward? So I just, I put that on your radar screen as an update. Okay, any questions on that? The second piece you should have in your folder, the FY '16 end-of-year report. This is a report that Jay feverishly works on in the summertime, and usually in September, for September 30th upload to the Office of School Finance of Desi. Just kind of give a brief overview. I know it's many tabs upon many tabs, but it's a pretty comprehensive look of all of our expenditures and revenue for FY '16.
Right, so if you opened it up, there's a tab that says Schedule 3, that's specifically instructional expenditures. I have to itemize every penny we spend based on the school it's spent from, the department, whether it's regular, special ed, whether it comes from local revenues, circuit breaker, school choice, revolving accounts, grants, and you have to itemize it all up, and it feeds into the main page, which the tab is E O Y '16. We have to report every penny we spend, pretty much in every category, all the way through everything. I then have to break out transportation costs and special ed costs. There's checks and balances within the spreadsheet, so that the data is probably entered in three or four different places, and it checks against it, so that if you make mistakes, which happens commonly, it catches them and says, look, you need to rectify this. So it's a way to categorize all revenue and all expenditures for the entire fiscal year. The state uses this to, for our Chapter 70 foundation budget, for instructional expenditures, all the data that you see on the Department of Ed's website, the average teacher salary, everything comes out of this report and what's filled in here. It's basically, it's a September project. They released the spreadsheet very end of August, and it's due the end of September. That's about it. There's a tab called Reports, which kind of summarizes things and gives you some of the specifics, sort of like broken down. It tells you where your net school spending is, where you are in relation to net school spending. You also have to enter FY '17's budget. That's about it. I mean, if there's questions. Other than that, I would tell you, explore the sheet if you are so inclined. It's a fairly extensive and very well-put-together spreadsheet. I actually admire quite a bit how they've actually done this spreadsheet. Believe it or not, our budget workbook that we use was designed a little bit off of that. We enable, use some of the techniques in there in order to make a spreadsheet that works for us. So it gave us ideas too.
Okay, and then last but not least, I think you have also in your packet the very first FY '17 year-to-date expenditure report. We're still very, obviously, early in this fiscal year, but essentially, our expenditures are exactly where we anticipate them being.
Yeah.
Is there any line or lines that you'd like to highlight, Jay?
No, right now, I'm feeling pretty good about it, but again, we're only a month in, so. I should be feeling pretty good about it right now. But everything, everything looks fine so far.
Okay. Thank you.
So I'll turn it over to Jan and Deb, who are going to talk about Keys to Clop and What's the Buzz at Memorial and Clop.
We had lots to, our Keys to Clop, it was our first time we had it. And it was a huge success for the first time. We were very pleased. We had six sessions across times four, but we did do a survey at the end for the parents, and they loved it. But they were wishing there was more time for questions and answers. So we're going to change the format a little bit this year, where we're going to have four sessions that they'll actually, they'll get to go to each one, we'll rotate them four times, where we're putting like all the curriculum together, the specialist with the second staff, and the KCR team, and all our special ed inclusion-type things. And then we're going to have one for Spanish and plus. Those will be two separate ones at the same time, to people that are different. So we're going to have a little bit different format, and we're going to have half-hour sessions as opposed to the 20-minute sessions, so they'll have time. So we're excited about it. So we sent those out, we put them out at open house for parents, so they could save the date, and then we're working on the files, and then we have to get them printed and stuff. So it's going to be October 20th. If you're around, you're welcome to join us. It's a nice way to showcase all the other things. People know a lot about the classroom teachers, but they don't know about all the other things that we offer, that are distributed. So we figure it's a nice way to showcase.
What's Buzz was also presented last year for the first time. Unfortunately, not as successful. We held it in January, and I think between the cold weather, you know, right after the holidays, being that far into the school year, the turnout was not as great as we had hoped. So we did survey with the staff, we surveyed parents, and took their feedback, and it revamped. So we are going to be holding What's the Buzz at Memorial School on October 27th. It will be 6:30 to 8:00 in the evening. There will be multiple sessions that parents can choose from. One of the things that we're going to be doing this year, that we did not do last year, but in response to parent feedback, we're adding, and that is, some of our staff members are volunteering their time to provide childcare, so that we can bring children, they'll be entertained in the caf and the gym while parents attend the informational session. Some of the topics include the extension of Lexia, again, second step, Go Math and Science, of course, response intervention, co-teaching, growth mindset, study strategies. We've got a, we've got a great plus, Spanish immersion, of course. We've got a good number of people that have signed up to be a part of it, so we're looking forward to that. And again, that's going to be October 27th.
And I should, I want to thank John, because we have volunteers. He's getting us the babysitters for the high school coming to our school, too. So we're offering as well, because that was feedback that we received as well, so, so that's good.
I think that's huge, because I know when they do the Spanish immersion information night, the childcare is packed. So it gives people an opportunity just to focus. That's awesome. Great, does anybody have any questions before we move on? Subcommittee update, superintendent's evaluation subcommittee.
I know, so...
We have to meet.
Can we kneel down? I sent out an email.
I saw that today, but I didn't get a chance to reply, by the way.
It's okay, so I'm going to put you on the spotlight.
Like, for cap, for planning right now?
Yeah.
Okay.
So...
Good luck.
Wednesday or Thursday of this week, or Monday of next week?
Monday or Thursday of this week. What time are you thinking, Joe?
7:00 PM?
Yep, I can do that. Okay, do anything, okay.
Thursday or Monday?
Can we do Monday?
Yeah, that's true. Wednesday is some point anyway.
48 hours. Got close to 48 hours.
All right, so Monday the 3rd?
I bet Kelly drilled that into us.
No, it's Diane.
I didn't know what you're talking about.
Dorothy.
Never mind. So...
It's Dorothy.
Monday the 3rd, 7? That work for you? Okay, Monday the 3rd at 7.
Perfect.
Well, there's the update.
I forced the issue.
It works that way. I'm just going to take this in really quick. Okay, moving right along to new business. Back to you, Joe.
Okay, we have our four principals here this evening to present school improvement plans. So I'm going to ask each principal to concisely, in maybe no more than a 10-minute span, just talk about what are, maybe the process in developing your school improvement plan for '16-'17? What are your major goals? And what are some of the key action steps? Some of the key action steps. Let's go reverse order, so we always kind of go elementary, middle, high. Let's do high, middle, elementary.
The middle's still there.
You're always stuck in the middle, you know?
Yep, this time you're up early middle. Early middle.
I'll sneak over here to present. So I'm excited to present for a few reasons. Once, I never get, first, I never get to go first, so that's good.
Awesome, thank you.
Secondly, I feel about school improvement plans when we paint fields about spreadsheets. And third, I'm really proud of the school improvement plan, so excited to present this to you tonight. School improvement plan for us is a really important document, and... So school improvement plan is an important document for us, and I would say it's been a big driver of our school improvement overall, appropriately so, because it's the thread that ties it all together. It connects the teachers' goals, to the school goals, to my goals, to the district goals, to Joe's goals, so. I think in some places, you find the school improvement plan that goes up on the shelf, and you check at it, you check on it in the mid-year, and then at the end of the year, and see what progress you've made. But we've been able to come up with a plan that teachers are taking actionable steps on each month. And so what you end up with is a really practical way that you've got everybody pulling in the same direction and making progress on the big picture on a monthly basis. So there's a few, a few things that we use in order to drive the strategic plan and the school improvement plan. None of this is a rabbit out of the hat. This is all coming from feedback. So what I passed around to you is a list of our school improvement goals and action steps. And I've linked to you in that far-right column, the driver of it. So does everyone have a copy of that sheet? Should be coming around. Okay, so you can see which of these we used in order to pull our action step. So the main one is the district goals and the action plans that you approved at the last meeting. But also, we looked at the district technology plan. We used a lot of feedback from K-12 insight survey, but also from feedback surveys from our seniors, from our student advisory feedback, and our Student Wellness Week survey. And then we also had the NIASC decennial report. You know, we had 22 recommendations for our next 10 years, and we use that in order to craft some of these goals moving forward. So, we've got three goals and a bunch of action steps. I'll try and be concise. I don't do concise all that well, but we'll see how I do. First is social-emotional learning. If you look at our past three, in particular, strategic school plans, school improvement plans, you would notice that they're very much focused on teaching and learning. And it's been a driver of school improvement. But when the district embraced the idea of social-emotional learning, and we heard some of it come through in student surveys and the K-12 insight survey, we realized this was a good goal for us. So we've embraced social-emotional learning, and have a few key action steps around that, that all teachers can find a way to buy into. The first of these is the Wellness Weeks, which were a hit. When I think of ways that we connected with kids and supported their wellness, I think also of the work that's going on at the elementary buildings and Misco's mentoring program. And I think Wellness Week was a highlight for our district last year, in that we really provided kids with practical strategies that helped them maintain their physical and mental wellness, as well as for faculty members. We're looking to strengthen the commitment of the faculty in the Wellness Committee. So that's going to be using the data from the Metro West survey and really connecting with that data in order to come up with some strategic action steps. And then the PD initiative that we have going on. Mo's been a big part of the Blackstone Valley work, to have on November 8th, a PD day, which provides a lot of social-emotional work from Justin Cameron and Nancy Clements, and a lot of people who are experts in the field. We'll get our teachers trained and get them some strategies to support kids. Looking at data, both ESPT and FCP. FCP is the counseling group that we have in our school, twice a week, providing outside counseling to our kids in order to support their needs. It's been a great program, but we don't have enough data to exactly quantify what the impact has been. And then looking to increase student recognition, great suggestion from some of our department chairs in order to support our kids better. Updating our advisory program, which you see came out of the NIASC survey, as well as K-12 and our senior exit interview. And then looking to develop a digital citizenship curriculum to make sure that our kids are using technology in a way that promotes wellness. So that's our first goal. Our second goal is the most substantial, that's curriculum instruction and assessment. And essentially, it's looking at PD and programming and formal collaboration as a way to support teaching and learning at our school. In your document, it's put together chronologically, but for this, I'll quickly go through by subject area. So for curriculum, we're looking to hold our 21st century learning conferences again. Siked for this, October 26th will be our first conference of the year. This came straight out of the K-12 insight survey, where our kids were saying they were having a hard time connecting what happens in the classroom with what happens in the real world. So we have two weeks before the election, a conference focused on civics. We'll dive into, through Kelly's help, she's going to help us host a school-wide election, so we'll see who the kids pick and see how they vote on the issues. We have a town meeting through Jay's help, which they're going to take the ballot questions on. But then we have all kinds of trainings, talking about social issues like Black Lives Matter, helping kids understand if they're a Democrat or a Republican, and giving them the skills they need to be a productive citizen. So financial literacy, networking, how to write a resume, those kinds of things. Direct link through community partners in order to build a bridge from curriculum to the real world. We're going to continue our work with Rubicon Atlas and strengthen Stages 1 and Stage 2, particularly of core documents, get those taken care of this year. And then you begin to see some formal collaboration, both within our building and between Misco and our building, in order to review, revise, evaluate, and update curriculum through the middle school and the high school. And then also through Dave Quinn's help, we're going to look at the evaluation of curriculum. That transitions us nicely into instruction. Dave has been a huge support already. He's an awesome resource, and we're going to connect him with our teachers for PD, for resource evaluation, and for co-teaching, in order to get our teachers really understanding how they're using technology and to take us to the next level. Straight from NIASC and also from the K-12 insight survey, we're looking to strengthen authentic learning, higher-order thinking, and inquiry-based learning. So that's providing resources, sharing best practices. We're excited about that work. I'm really excited about the fourth bullet down, and that's the Teachers' League, leading teachers' website. I'm a real believer in the capacity of our teachers, and last year, we created a digital catalog of their best practices that is grouped by categories like student engagement or tech integration, but also relates directly to the teacher evaluation rubrics. So our teachers are able to find, be connected to each other through a digital platform. And we wrote this year a model professional practice goal, where teachers can adopt a best practice of their colleagues once per month. So we're really building the capacity of teachers through their strengths, which is really exciting to see. And it supports that idea of sort of competitive collaboration. Everybody makes each other better. So we're excited about that. Increased communication and learning objectives, that's something we've made a lot of progress with in the past 12 months. But NIASC did note it as an area for improvement. And then looking to provide PD, you've seen a lot of movement with inclusion in the district, and it's coming to Nipmuck now. So we're providing the PD for our teachers to get them, working with teachers from across the district and inclusion areas. Then assessment, so the last steps here, using data more frequently and more meaningfully, and especially the data related to the 21st century learning expectations. So we're, we were charged by, to do that through NIASC, and it's something we need to do. Our teachers are ready for the challenge, so it's providing more data sources for them to review, and also a forum by which they can use it to improve teaching and learning. Last goal is communication, again, K-12 insight survey. We're looking to improve the way we give feedback to kids and feedback to parents. Hopefully, you're seeing this from me. When I talk about, when I talk about the goals, providing a framework for our teachers and our administrators to improve, this is one thing that I've embraced in my practice this year, by updating my blog, changing the way I do student features. By updating my blog, changing the way I do student features, using a Google Calendar, I've taken this on for my own professional practice goal. But we'll be looking to provide teachers with support. Our department chairs wrote another model professional practice goal for those teachers who are struggling with communication to parents. It's got 20 best practices they can choose to adopt. By the end of the year, they've adopted eight of those. They go from being needs improvement to exemplary in one shot. We're looking to use the tools we have in place more effectively, so that's sharing data better and using iPass more effectively. Also, the website has had a tremendous update. We wanna make sure that we have a protocol in place in order to get information up on the website in a timely manner. And then you'll see sessions through Dave Quinn and through our teachers, getting parents connected to tools like Google Classroom. Ninety percent of our teachers right now use Google Classroom, but we'll get that other 10% onboard by January. So we're looking to expand the way we communicate, connect more meaningfully, but also provide feedback for kids. And again, that comes right out of the idea of the K-12 insight survey. I said to my faculty, not at the beginning of this year, but the year before, our school improvement plan should never be a surprise. It's never what's new, it's always what's next, and I feel like that theme continues here. You can see a real clear alignment from where we were a few years ago to where we are now. Nothing's fallen off the plan, it's just been taken to the next level, so I'm excited about where we're going and I'm excited for what's next. That was as concise as I can be.
That's 10 minutes on spot, this jar.
Any questions? Thank you, John. Ann and Paul, the big metal.
We'll be off-camera.
You can be on-camera, Paul. You're a charismatic one. So we've had a lot of fun putting the school improvement plan together, starting this summer, and kind of right up till this point, we've been working on the steps that we've taken, the survey, the strategic plan, the K-12 survey, insight survey was wonderful. So the first thing we did was this summer when Dr. Maruzcheck and Dr. Maureen and Dr. Maruzcheck met with the K-12 insight people, we kind of reviewed it and gave our reflections at the leadership team meeting this summer, the retreat.
The second step, basically, we met with Dr. Maruzcheck really to kinda go over the broad brush strokes of the plan to make sure that we were on point, and then from there, we...
We brought it to the faculty meeting, the first faculty meeting that we had, the first day that teachers reported, on August 29th. We brought the new school improvement plan, the draft of Dr. Maruzcheck and the leadership team's school improvement plan, and the survey results. We didn't take the time to go through it, I gave the teachers enough time to go through it on their own, and then at the next meeting...
The next meeting, basically, we met, we had them break up into focus groups. Maureen was also there, helping to lead one of the focus groups, and really wanted to make sure that this was not just a document that was written in a vacuum, that we wanted to make sure that everybody's voice was heard, so that the faculty gave us incredible feedback in relation to really punching up the plan. So it was a great experience, I think, that they got a lot out of it as well.
And like we're asking our teachers to use, to go to all to Google Classroom and to use Google Documents, we use that, and we're using that in all of our faculty meetings, so it was a living, breathing, working document that then we could take and kind of tweak and pull together. Some teachers did add to it over the next couple of days, and then on last Tuesday, on the 20th, I brought it to the school council meeting, and we had a nice meeting, they thought it was, they thought it was a good plan and a good way to go. So we have actually six goals this year, we have a lot of work to do. And our first goal is on communication, and it's really taken from the strategic plan and from the K-12 survey, and things that we already know. So we need to evaluate current communications and practices and streamline the best practices. A lot of times in the K-12 survey, we had, there's too much newsletter communication, there's not enough. There's too much email communication, there's not enough. So we got it on both ends, we really have to find a good, a good way to communicate with our parents, so that every single parent feels comfortable.
And one of the things that I learned, being new last year, was that Misco was basically used as the test kitchen, if you will. So when the technology was coming out, I think the, the, the direction was, just try a bunch of different things and see what makes sense. So we had a lot of teachers who really took that and ran with it, so we had all sorts of different platforms to communicate, and as you can imagine, most of you folks are parents of kids, and it was, you know, your sixth grade is this way, seventh grade is that way, eighth grade, and so on and so forth. So Google Classroom is going to be the format that we're gonna be using, I think a lot of people had been using it already, so the transition was, we told them it's a coming, so they had plenty of time to work it, and I think that, similar to John, we're probably a little bit further ahead, that, you know, 100% of our teachers are gonna be on the Google Classroom, so that's gonna be easier for people to be able to access it and see what the information is. One-stop shopping, if you will.
So, and it's opening, open to parents, and that's something that's coming, there is going to be tutorials that Dave Quinn is setting up for parents on how to access Google Classroom, but essentially, any iPass email address, we can link to a student address, which is just, I think, fabulous. You can check, you have some students that you don't need to check, you can look in every once in a while, and there are others that you wanna check on a daily basis, so it's nice for all different types of households at this point. So, we also revised Open House, we were revising parent-teacher conferences, they've never worked for seventh and eighth grade, fifth and sixth parent-teacher conferences have always worked. So we're trying a different approach this year. Open House night worked well, we really just added the teachers into the classrooms as opposed to the auditorium and the cafeteria, more homey visit, more, you know, more general. I think it's nice sitting in the classroom and seeing actually what your children is sitting in all day, and we added our little spiel in the beginning, so I don't know if that worked.
Yeah, I think that, I think it was very well received.
It was.
I think sometimes as an administrator, you say, okay, I wanna step back and just give all the time to the, to the teachers, but I think it's important that parents hear from the administration too, as to what's the direction, what's our, you know, philosophy on education, so that time is important, and frankly, we're hearing from parents that that's what they want.
Right.
And I think that it was very well received.
And it's funny, because I've been an administrator 11 years, and it was about six or seven years ago, yeah, you don't, we don't really wanna see you, we wanna see the teachers, and now they wanna see us, so it's good, in another five years, maybe they don't wanna see us again, so that's fine. So parent-teacher conferences should serve, serve us better. And we're also doing newsletters, every grade level, every content area, also the specialists, the different departments are putting out a newsletter quarterly. We're all very excited about that, the teachers are excited about that, and that's kind of just a little homey thing that's coming home, it's not gonna, you know, be the standards and the whatnot, it's gonna be having the MCAS, we're also, you know, please get in the money for the field trip, and different things like that, but just hearing communication from the parents, and we'll send it home electronically, but paper copies will always be available. And Paul and I are having coffee talks, we're inviting Maureen, Dave, Quinn, a couple of other people, we'll do that every other month, and we'll have them in the morning, and the afternoon, and then at evening. So one day, we'll do three meetings to try to catch all schedules, because we know people are, a lot of different schedules, and I've done coffee talks before with parents, and even though five or six, or 14 or 15 come, it's always a really great event that parents can come and ask questions in an intimate setting.
The other thing in relation to communication, we wanna really focus on, I hit hard this year, is quality and timely feedback for students as well as for parents. So we wanna make sure that that loop is there, so kids need to know what they're doing well, they need to know why they're doing it, and they need to know how to do it better. So the only way we can do that is to make sure that we're giving them that quality feedback, to be able to sit with a student and say, hey, this is really going well, here's how you can do better. It's almost like a coaching cycle, if you will. The same thing with parents, too. I mean, one of the things that we heard from the study, and again, it was a little confusing, but we got it, was that way too much information, but really, when we drilled down to the, the meeting we had with the school council, basically what people were saying is that we need to have categorized it so we know where to go for things. So we should have a section for curriculum, so there it is, it's over there. So if you have any questions about what's going on with curriculum, I just have to pick it up and I'm done. If there is a section in relation to student life, if you will, what's going on in the building, and how's that happening, so you'd be able to go in there and find exactly what you're looking for, so.
Teachers are really excited about the quality and timely feedback, it's something that every teacher should do, and so a lot of the teacher goals, Paul and I are conducting goal-setting meetings now, he's got 30 goal-setting meetings, I have 31, and a lot of the teachers have this quality and timely feedback. My opinion as an educator is, if you're gonna give an assessment to a student, and you're not gonna give them quality and timely feedback, then don't give the assessment, because it's not really worth anything, and there's no value educationally for it. And we also are doing a map to Misco in the late winter, early spring, just so parents can get a feel of what else is going out. We're going to kind of frame it in map to Misco for 2017, 2018, so the parents know what's coming for our next year, and all the different activities and things that their children can be part of, and academics and whatnot. So we're excited about that. We're gonna go visit Jan and Deb.
We're gonna steal everything.
Steal everything that they have, we like stealing. And then the next, next email, next email, next goal for Misco Hill is customer service. It may sound strange in education, but it's a good goal for Misco Hill. So the first thing we want to really do with this is consistent communication across all grade levels. And what we mean by that is that a fifth-grade parent and an eighth-grade parent should have the, know the expectation of what kind of communication. They don't have to learn a new type of communication with every different grade level. It's a little redundant with the first communication goal, but it is an important goal. Five, four grade levels of going through and having to learn this website and that type of communication that parent wants to email, it's just too much. And parents should also have the expectation that if something happens with their child, no matter if they're in fifth, sixth, seventh, or eighth, that they're gonna get a teacher phone call, that, you know, if your child is failing a couple of times, you're gonna get feedback from the teacher or the administrator, someone's gonna contact you. So that's really important for us.
Yeah, one of the things we don't want the grades to be is, you know, a birthday party or Christmas or whatever, it's like you open up the presents and there is, you don't know what you get. You should know exactly what's going on with your kids right straight through, so making sure that that communication happens in a timely fashion, too. The next one is getting parents plugged in, so some of you may have come to the, the Open House, and we talked about getting kids plugged in, and what we wanna do is to make sure that the kids are part of the Misco, Misco Hill School community, not just come for the academics and leave, but we challenge all the kids to get involved in something that enhances their education. As well as, we're looking for parents to get plugged in, too, because there's a wealth of, of resources out in the community where people are saying, gee, I could do X, Y, and Z, but I just don't know how to get into the school. So one of the things we're gonna be putting out is a survey to all the parents to say, you know, here are the different chunked categories, do you feel like you would like to be a part of them? Whether it's, you know, enhancing the STEM experience, getting, you know, parents connected in a million different ways. So we want people to feel like Misco Hill is a place that where you wanna be a part of, and wanna be a part of actively during the course of the day.
And the other thing that we're doing is an evaluation of the physical plant and recommendations for the next budget. Every principal goes through their building during the summertime, we make a checklist of what needs to be improved, what needs to be replaced, but quite frankly, I think it's a dead document because it's not tied to any budget. We're gonna do ours real early, so we're gonna get in on the budget early, just so you know, we're gonna get all the money, and get some recommendations for what really needs to happen. Someone said to me today, having, if, if the Rolling Stones played their first concert in the building, it's probably time for a new building. I love the building, I live in Mendon, I love the Misco Hill building, it really works well for the population, but we really need some major updates and some major financing going into the building. So I am very excited to do this, we're gonna pop on this right away and get that recommendation in for the, for the next budget cycle.
The other thing is, too, is the mindset of staff for a warm, welcoming, friendly environment. As, as people come into the building, they should be met with a smile, hi, we're glad you're here. And, and that doesn't take a lot of effort, but it does take a mindset, and that's, that's a change for some people, for, for some of us, it's not, but apparently, for some, it is. So we're gonna be working with those reluctant people who don't know how to, how to smile, or, or the power of the smile, and making sure that when you do walk in the building, it's a place that you wanna be a part of. Because again, it's, it is, I don't think sometimes people are aware of some of the, the energy that they're giving off, and it can be either positive or negative, so again, we, we appreciate the, the feedback that we've gotten from a number of different people in the community in relation to that, because sometimes when you're right in, right in front of it, you don't see it, so it's good for somebody to tap you on the shoulder and say, you might wanna have a conversation with Happy over there, so that's what we're gonna do.
And then parental communication, we're changing up with, with the staff. Phone calls, we really believe, Paul and I both believe that phone calls is a, is a really good thing to do. Face-to-face meetings are the best. Our grade levels are doing Twitter, personal notes in their, in their goal-setting, positive emails to ensure a more personal approach. So they're, they have all of these in their goals, which is, is really a nice move.
The other thing is, we wanna have more opportunities for student presentations to parents. We want parents to know what's actually happening inside the classrooms. Right now, we have two opportunities for five and eight, and we're trying to build that capacity for six and seven as well. It was great for me the first time going through this last year to see the different opportunities, and parents love to come out and see what kids are doing, and kids love it more to be able to show it. I mean, the faces on, on, on everybody, it's just, it just lights up the school. So it, we're trying to create that, where, you know, it's a predictable thing, everybody knows when it's going to be, and I think it's just a, it's a no-brainer, really.
It is, it's a fun thing, because ELA and math, we're in MCAS schools where every grade level takes ELA and math tests, and they're intensive, and the teacher, ELA and math teachers are preparing even right before, doing their little last-minute things. So the student presentations that we've asked for is in science and social studies. So fifth and eighth grade already have their wonderful science and social studies projects, and sixth and seventh will definitely have those before the end of the school year this year. And then our beautification committee, based on the physical plant evaluation, so once we get through that, then we can get our beautification committee onboard and see where we're at. And the next one is probably the most important one going, is challenging curriculum. So we, from the K-12 insight survey, had some really interesting results from the, from the students, and I, I really think the student survey is probably the most important survey. And they overwhelmingly said that teachers had high expectations for them. Yes, like 90, 87%, 90%, they had high expectations, but when asked if they felt challenged by the curriculum, that wasn't so much, it was about a third of the students felt challenged by the curriculum. So there's a real big difference there, so we're gonna put a survey out and drill down why they don't feel challenged. Once we get those results for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, we're not gonna survey our fifth graders quite yet, they're just coming to us, so they don't really have an opinion of Misco quite yet, but we're really excited about that. And we're gonna be doing a lot of more challenging curriculum work. We started it last year and moving forward this year.
Yeah, one of the things that, again, this is part of the, the district goals that we're looking at, and it was a long discussion that we had the other day at the administrative meeting, but again, the curriculum time is going to be really focusing on vertical alignment. If you, if you think about the curriculum as a stairway, and there are 12 steps, if you will, so the steps should be of equal space, it shouldn't be, you go from fourth to fifth way up here. So the work is going to be at the building first, and then the curriculum assistants are gonna get together with the department chairs at the high school, as well as the elementary school, and that's really gonna be the work of saying, okay, where does it fit in the standards, where does it fit in the curriculum, are we hitting it, how are we hitting it, what are we doing with it? And really have those conversations K-12, so it's a viable and predictable curriculum right straight through.
And then just increase the number of opportunities that students are gonna be challenged, and, and we have a number of them here, that hopefully they will be challenged by and really have a tie-in to the curriculum, vested interest. And then, we don't have four, three more slides, we only have one slide.
Yeah, because we knew it would be over time at this point.
Because we know way over time, this is Larry and Mo's show. But Goals 4 through 6 are on Common Assessments, inclusion and social-emotional learning, very much what the district goals are, and we're very excited about all these goals, we didn't mean to diminish them by putting them all on one slide, but the Common Assessments, those protocols that we're putting into place, examining the curriculum, the assessments especially, we're also moving toward practicing online Common Assessments and online MCAS, Dr. Maruzcheck and I are in conversation with moving the MCAS. I said, you know, if eighth grade is doing it, and we had, it's a one-to-one thing, our iPads support the MCAS test, let's go five to eight this year, see what happens. It's kind of a forgiveness year, I don't think I can get in too much trouble if it goes bad, so I think it's a good idea.
And again, expand the opportunities for students to access co-teaching strategy, so that's the inclusion goal, very similar to what the high school's doing, we were a little bit ahead of the schedule. So it's, it's, you know, an idea that students who are in the regular-ed classrooms, if you will, will get exposure to the curriculum. It's an interesting thing, when we took a look at some of the grade-five results in relation to student growth, a lot of the students who were in the inclusion model, and we're gonna have a larger, you know, data dive on that, but in the first blush going through it, we kind of identified some of the students, and was very powerful for the teachers, because they were saying, gee, I'm not sure this is working, but when we presented them the SGP's, and they saw how much the kids had grown over a short period But when we presented them the SGP's and they saw how much the kids had grown over a short period of time, it was eye-opening for them. They said, wow. And we had the discussion and really came to, well, for some of these kids, it was the first time they were exposed to the actual curriculum. Because when they were in, you know, sub-separate classrooms, they never got exposed to it. So the kids grew in huge leaps and bounds just by simply being in those classes.
And just by looking at the SGP and just not looking at the actual test score is where we're really gonna get our inclusion model data. We're also, we need PD for the teachers and especially the paraprofessionals at Misco on effective inclusive practices. So a lot of PD, the paraprofessionals are actually gonna get three in-house days on professional development with Donna Simone and Judy Garvey, who are incredibly fabulous. They couldn't be better. Dennis found that pair and they're like gods. Oh, no, Maureen found the pair. Thank you, Maureen. Maureen and Dennis found the pair.
And again, increased centered, student-centered programming. Again, what we tried to do here was just to kind of pull out some of the real leverage points. But if you take a look at the plan, there are a lot more different things that we're looking to do to enhance that.
We're gonna increase the ESPT. The ESPT is done in seventh grade and then in tenth grade. And then the two schools compare what's going on. And we're also gonna pilot the CASL. It's a collaborative for academic, social, and emotional learning. And it really is a great resource for school districts on what kind of programming you can bring in, what kind of things that you need. So excited about the social-emotional learning goal.
And very similar to the high school. The high school actually was great because they really kind of tapped us on the shoulder and said, hey, this is a great program. So FCP, at the end of the year, at John and Mary Ann's suggestion, we contacted them as well. And they are now doing two days a week at the middle school. We are talking about them doing a third day as well. As well as, we really did a lot of work over the summertime, taking a look at how can we push into classrooms to do a lot of the social-emotional learning. So as an example, Mara Beth Ishler did all of the fifth grades this past week over two days. And really did a dynamic presentation in relation to awareness of special needs and how similar the students are, not dissimilar. She did a great job. And some quick feedback was that one of the kids who is in her program had never had any kids come up and play with her. It was just one of those things that they didn't do. And after that presentation, eight girls came over to her and said, come on, let's go play. So the immediate response was excellent, so.
So we just have to keep reminding them because our youngsters need reminding constantly. So I don't know if you have any questions, but we're really excited about our goals. I know there's a lot of goals, but it's a big school. We have a lot to do.
I like the idea that you're starting the Google Classroom communication so that once the kids are at the high school level, it's just a seamless transition and, you know, not having the different platforms.
We just had a million platforms because quite frankly, when we started, there wasn't Google Classroom. We really were trying to find, there were not too many platforms out there. So we really started and kind of messed things up as much as we possibly could. And then last year, I think at the beginning of the year, I said, we're going Google Classroom, so do it. And Paul and I have gone, I don't use any Microsoft products. I don't use any other communication other than Google. And it's just much easier. It's like the greatest thing. Yeah. He never knows where I store documents.
No, I can't find anything. It's probably best.
Thank you. We went way over, so sorry.
That's all right. We're the whole followers. Shall I start?
Yeah.
Our process began, first of all, we started saying that the Memorial School and the H.B. Pluck School Improvement Plans are identical. We both started the process, working in our school councils. And then came together with the admin team over the summer, shared the information, again, for Google Docs with our teachers. And Jan and I have met a number of times with our staff to pound out these core goals. So I'd like to just take a second to talk about the first two. As you may remember, three years ago, we implemented the Wonders reading program. And that was one of our goals at that time. And essentially what we've done is, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. It worked very, very well with the implementation of the Wonders program. And so we've created a very similar goal for our Go Math program. As you know, it's a brilliant program. It is very multifaceted, very many components to it. And so there's gonna be a good bit of professional development throughout the school year for the teachers. As well as opportunities for teachers to meet across the district by grade levels. To look at the different assessment components, choose the ones that work for them, become familiar with the online component. We will also be working with Maureen, as we did with Wonders program, to create an implementation checklist. And this is really just an easy checklist. One of the things that are very visible as we're doing walkthroughs that indicate that this program is being implemented with a degree of fidelity in all classrooms. That worked out very well with the teachers also. Jan and I both shared the beginning of the month, any given month, what we would be looking for. And then as we went through the classrooms, we saw it or we didn't and had follow-up conversations about that. It was really a nice way of monitoring on a regular, ongoing basis what was happening towards implementation. We also plan to create a survey to get faculty feedback on the program. What do they need as we move forward? How can we support them? Any implementation of this nature takes a number of years, two, you know, three to five years to implement it. A hundred percent with a degree of comfort, if you will. So we wanna make sure that we know what we can do to support our teachers in the second year of implementation. Our second goal, we are piloting the Inspire Science program. And this is a new program, I should say the Go Math program. A good amount of time was spent choosing that program. There was a committee, it was about, what, nine months, I guess, we met on a regular basis to look at different programs, pilot different programs, again, looking for rigor, looking for what was that alignment to the new standards. We have struggled with science. We have not had a formal science program in the district for quite some time. The state was in the process of changing the standards. And through a grant, Maureen was able to acquire Inspire Science programs for all teachers K through four, at least some components. And so this goal really speaks to taking this year to explore the program, better understand the new generation science standards, which have been adopted by the state, providing our teachers time to unpack the program, if you will. And pick and choose initially what pieces of the program support the standards that they have to teach. In addition, we need to be looking at, what do we have for resources in the building? What do we need to get? Do we need additional resources, materials for our teachers? So this goal really is about the piloting of the program, becoming familiar with it, and working together to support, to support each other with it. I'm gonna take the next two goals. So the first, the number three goal is that it ties in nicely with our K to twelve insight because some of the parent comments were, they wanted to make sure that all grade levels had access to technology. And they wanted to know how it was incorporated into the curriculum. So we chose this particular standard to address those concerns, make sure that we focus on that. So we are very fortunate that we have gone to the Google Classroom this year and we've already started holding PD. So the teachers have been trained and they'll continually be trained on the Google Classroom, the Google Drive, how to use the Drive. They already held several full-day sessions in the summer for teachers, so the teachers got their new MacBooks. It's very new. It's very different than desktop. Most of, you know, don't work the same way. The program, there's a lot of things that weren't compatible with the different programs. So we've been offering a lot of PD to make sure that teachers K to twelve all are familiar with the Google Classroom, how to use the Gmail. Dave Quinn has just did a survey for the elementary schools to try and find out and assess what their needs are. And I know this Thursday, he's actually holding his first one with my school, eight to nine. And we're gonna send me a Google Drive with info and Q and A. So what he'll do is he'll start with that. He'll keep addressing with the teachers, what is it that you need? And he'll come up with some activities. He's making himself available because the end goal for Dave is to get in there and help them use the technology in a meaningful way with the curriculum. We're very fortunate with both the Wonders program and the new Go Math because it's very interactive. It's very hands-on. So when the smart boards go, it's really, because the kids are used to that interactive visual. For the visual learners, these programs are phenomenal. And so what we're going to make sure is during the year that we incorporate the Wonders online assessments. I was actually, Dr. Maris Chek came over today and we were doing walkthroughs. And we actually went into the tech lab, which was eye-opening. Because what we're trying to do is there's benchmark assessments three times a year in the Go Math. And what we're trying to do is get the children used to taking these tests online in the computer. So they've done the SRI, first grade to fourth, and the SMI for years. But the Go Math is like a fifty-minute test on the computer that we feel is gonna help them get prepared for our fourth grades are going online for the MCAS. So we feel like they're going to have multiple opportunities to get familiar with it. Today was eye-opening because just getting them on to log on and to do all these new passwords and get to the program was quite the feat.
It was amazing watching twenty-two, twenty-three third graders go through a series of drop-down boxes, putting in their name, a specific password. Things that you would take for granted. I mean, okay, I'm a former high school chemistry teacher. It was eye-opening seeing the third graders. I mean, some got it very quickly.
And Ms. Jordan, she has the patience, I was saying, she's going around and the kids are raising their hand and some of the stuff wasn't working. And we were like, you know what? We tried to look at the positive because you don't wanna focus on like, okay, this wasn't working. You look on the positive and say, but aren't you glad we're trying it now? We have time to keep working. So it's only going to get better. Because we're like, look, all these kids did get on. Now we gotta figure out the other ones. But it's definitely a learning process, but we're gonna go through it together. So I'm glad we could see it.
And even once they get on, there's a whole set of, particularly on the math, a whole set of tools that they need to be able to use and manipulate online in order to answer the question.
And we have a test against that. Every kid's username is first initial, last name. And then their password is capital M U R S D, and then their four-digit lunch pen. Simple enough, right?
Not too much.
No, it's not. No. Because normally all the passwords are last name, first initial, so they've been programmed a certain way. And then they're like, you know, we didn't try with first.
I need a couple of friends today.
So it's a work in progress, but I'm very comfortable. So a lot of the teachers have also taken on this goal where they're really going to be learning, you know, attending the lesson learns. We have a venue, both, you know, Mrs. Swain and I, where we're going to be doing some sharing during our faculty meetings. The teachers, we all, we both have data blocks where the teachers will be sharing different technology pieces they're using, the different assessments and analyzing the assessment. So we're using a lot of different opportunities. And then with the professional development during the year, we feel like we're on a good roll. And by the end, you know, we tell them all the time, we're learning it, too.
We're in this together.
Yeah, so I think that's gonna be a good goal. Our last goal is very important, and as you can tell, it's been stressed on every level. This was also a big part of our K to twelve insight. We focus and we do extremely good job with the academics, teaching the students in the classroom. Over the past few years, we've been able to add, you know, a couple of special ed teachers. You know, we still would like another woman. But we've been adding special ed. We were able to add a reading specialist, which really is helping the non-IP kids, you know, getting in the classrooms with the academic support. So we're getting to a point where we feel like we're meeting the needs of the students academically. And from the surveys, that's what parents are saying, we're meeting the needs. Where we need work, and that's what the survey is about, is focus on what you're doing well, keep doing it, but then look at where you can improve. Where we feel we need to improve is the social and emotional. Children are coming in with a lot more social-emotional struggles. And if you don't focus on those and help them with it, you can't teach the academics. So at the elementary school, it's Mrs. Swain and I. So it's hard to deal with everything and not have, you know, the assistant or behaviors. So we're looking like, okay, we don't have the budget for that now. What can we do to help support it? So as an admin team, we've done a lot of brainstorming on this. We've made it a focus with our professional development. Maureen Cohen brought us in, Dr. Rich LaRoy, who was a very incredible speaker. Our first day, full day, really spoke to the teachers about, we have to look at the whole child. How do we educate the whole child? And again, you have to understand, every child's different and they're coming in with different needs. And before we can teach, we have to understand it. So our focus this year is to offer more professional development, to help train the teachers and help support the teachers so that they can deal with the emotional and social struggles that the children are having. So then they can actually open them up and make them feel comfortable in the academics. It's just, it's hard. The teachers work really hard. They're learning the new wonders still. They've got the Go Math. Now they've got the science. And they're trying to deal with other issues that really, things have changed from when they were kids. And when I taught twenty years ago, to post now, there's just a different need of what teachers need to be. And they wanna help. We also incorporate, through our kind, caring, and respect, we both have these programs at our school. So we're focusing a little bit more with the Second Step Anti-Bullying Program. And we're trying to, we do a lot of role modeling. We have people coming in and talking. You know, we have the Resource Officer now, and I know the High School Officer, Eddie, and I'm sure Officer Ozina. And Ozina, they come in and they'll talk to the kids about different situations. And so that's been great. We also, we updated our curriculum because it was quite old, probably, you know, nine or ten years. And we updated to the new curriculum, which is much more child-friendly, parent-friendly. So parents will be able to receive information, newsletters, this is what we're working on, you know, this is what you can do at home. You know, try to use the same, you know, terminology, same words that we do to help. So we're hoping that that will be more of a homeschool connection, that, you know, people can understand that that's part of who we are, which is why we're doing keys to clef. And the, what's the buzz is to explain to them, there's more to the child than what happens just in the classroom. So it's a big goal for us, but we feel that it's gonna help us to train and support teachers and ultimately helping children feel successful.
Another thing that Jan and I have been doing that really isn't even reflected in that is working with our school nurses and our adjustment councils to bring strategies, resources, whatnot, into our staff meetings every month so that our teachers are walking away with a nugget. It's something that they can take immediately to their classroom and utilize. We're also.
If you ever, one of our first faculty meetings, we both used that kid letter. That was phenomenal. We both did a kickoff of that where if you Google it, it's just phenomenal. And, you know, I read it to the teachers and, you know, we made them think, and everyone, you could just see them like, oh, my God, I know that child. I know that child. And it just made them reflect on how different the kids are and why somebody might be misidentifying. It's not because they have control. They didn't come to school saying, I wanna be fresh today. It's not personal. It's just, that's an outlet. They feel safe. And those are the things we're dealing with where it makes it difficult for the teachers to focus on the others when we're dealing with these issues. So we're looking for help. We're looking for training. But I feel like our district's in a good place in that we're offering that. And we're doing a lot of reading and talking.
And working together, which has been great.
Yeah.
We're really fortunate that we have each other, being the only administrators in the building, that we do have each other.
Correct me if I'm wrong, the Second Step updates are pretty significant as far as.
Very significant.
I've seen the posters throughout your buildings with regard to kind of those self-regulation type behaviors.
Right. It's teaching them the breathing, the steps, and it's okay to feel this way. It's what we do with our feelings. And you're not alone. And just realizing we all have struggles, you know. One day you might have a struggle, tomorrow you might have it, and this is just normal. And we're there to help. We're just, you know, need the resources to go a little further, but we're gonna focus on it. And so it's an important part. It's not just math, science, social studies. It's just, I think it's important for you as a school committee to realize that, you know, there's more to teaching than just reading, writing, or anything. Do you have any questions for us?
I don't have any questions, but I just have a kind of a response to that whole focus on social-emotional learning. I am so thrilled to see it in everybody's goals. Because if there's something that I hear from parents more, it's about how their students are stressed or how they're struggling with anxiety. I have always been very open. I have two children in my family who struggle with anxiety. And it presents itself in different ways. But you made a comment, Jan, that really hit home. It gets. It gets in the way of learning. It really gets in the way of learning. And until, you know, parents and teachers can appreciate it for what it is and help students through that, and you never know what that's going to be. I know that Colby participated in Astro Walensky's mindful meditation last year. In 10 million years, I never thought my son would come home and say, can I do mindful meditation? My eight-year-old at that point. And I was like, sure, absolutely, because she had used those techniques in her classroom to help center the children, and he had a great year. And I know a lot of it comes from easing the anxieties that he was feeling with all of the expectations. And I know just, probably embarrassed myself here, but, you know, just what I'm trying to support my students in homework in the middle school level, it's a little advanced sometimes. And I think, you know, some of the concepts that they're learning in middle school, I was learning in high school. So we're expecting a lot of our students in the classroom. We're also expecting a lot of our students out of the classroom in terms of homework and all of the other things that we do to create well-rounded children.
And our families are more stressed.
And our families are more stressed. So there's so many avenues that it's coming from that I can just tell you as a parent, I really appreciate this focus. I know it was also a focus at the school committee conference last November, that they were discussing how this is, this isn't just in Mendenup to regional school district, it's everywhere. And so everybody is dealing with this, and I appreciate that our district is responding to it. So thank you all.
And I'll be interested to see how the Google Classroom is rolling out in those lower elementary ages because it's an easy transition for the upper middle, the upper elementary, middle and high school because they know their emails and, you know, that kind of thing. So I'll be just interested to learn.
Is that a different level at the elementary? So the way we're doing it at the elementary, because we do not have that, the full access of what they're doing. So what we're doing is, Mrs. Swain and I both created Google Classrooms for our teachers. So we have, our teachers meet, they meet more than once, but they meet as a regular team, a grade-level team meeting at least one period a week, and they also have their data blocks. And so what we did is we created Google Classroom so that that's where they're doing their agendas. That's where like when they find something, you know, they want to share. So we're doing it with them. So we try to go to the grade-level meetings and the data blocks, but we're not always there, and this is the way for us to communicate. So we might give them an assignment, so like we got the MCAS, so, you know, giving them the information, and then we're saying, okay, we're going to analyze this, we're going to meet here, we're going to talk, and they'll put in their input, here's our action steps. This is what we're doing. So we're doing it slowly as far as teachers learning how to do the Google Classrooms with us. You know, hopefully, it will end up being like fourth grade, we'll stop doing it at the end of the year to get them ready for fifth, but first, second, third, they're not going to do Google Classroom.
But I was just wondering how you were going to be using that as a staff.
And we're doing it to get the teachers ready and to access it and become familiar. So again, we're still learning it, so even just, we're pretty impressed that we know how to do it. But, Don, we've set up.
We'll help you.
You know, to set it up, like, oh, that's what that lot is for. So it is, you know, again, I think what's great is that the teachers know we're learning too, and the children will know, like, hey, we're all learning. This is okay. We're making mistakes. That's what life is about. You make a mistake, you learn, you don't make that mistake again. And we go on.
Well.
That's the best. Yeah. So it is, that's a learning process, but the Google Classroom will definitely not look the same as MSCO or middle school. But I'm glad you brought that up because I wouldn't want to give the illusion that we're there or not.
You never know.
Yeah. Don't push it.
Okay, approval of Knitlock's student trip to Italy.
So I'll step in for Kate Knitlock. I'm really fortunate to have Kate Riordan on staff, who's, I think, a few friends in school community, as you know, if you have a teacher who travels well and loves organizing trips, she's a real gem for the district. We worked a long time with Explorer Club to take kids on a trip every year. The Italy trip is every other year. We're looking at April 2018, from April 11th to April 20th. Similar price range, it's about $3,400, so it's not a cheap trip, which is part of the reason why we're here now, so kids can start doing the fundraising and start asking for it, the birthday gifts and holiday gifts in order to support it. But Italy trip is our most popular. We typically have 30 to 50 kids go on that trip, and you have all the information. I don't know if you have any questions. It's Venice, Florence, Rome, it looks like a blast. Maybe we'll get enough kids that they need another chaperone.
Wish I could go. I'll chaperone.
And they just did the trip this past April vacation, correct?
They did, right. And so they have another Europe trip planned, but the Italy trip is always the highlight. Yeah, and Kate's, Kate's organizing a faculty trip as well, so she's.
There's about 15 or 17 of us going.
To Italy as well?
To Italy, yeah. Next July, July 1st, we're going. And we just extended it to go to Capri and Pompeii. Very exciting.
Very.
That sounds great.
So I didn't know if you had questions, but again, it's a similar trip to what's been proven in the past, and we're excited for it.
That sounds great. So do we need to take a vote?
Yes.
To approve that?
Motion.
Okay. So looking for a motion to approve the Knitlock's student trip to Italy in FY18.
I make a motion to approve the Italy trip for the high school in 2018, as presented by John.
Okay, I'm assuming we have no discussion because we just talked about it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, passes.
Thank you very much.
Excuse me. Do we need a vote for the approval of plans?
What we're going to do is the vote for those is going to be at the next meeting.
Okay.
So that way, people have time to absorb it.
Kelly, did you get for the minutes that I was the shortest presentation?
She also put down a expression.
That's certainly a new feature, isn't it?
I don't know. That's a long question.
So I will say one thing regarding the plans, if I can go backwards for a second. I just want to say thank you because I think when looking at these plans, you can see there's been a lot of thought, there's been a lot of feedback taken in, and there's been a lot of specificity. So I know that takes a lot of work and a lot of your time and your team's time put together, so I just wanted to say thank you because it does show.
Yeah, I noticed that too because I actually had the opportunity to look through all the K-12 Insight surveys and read all the comments, and I feel like a lot of these goals are very specific to feedback that was given. And I think, again, it does, it's testament to just the fact that it's been internalized, and it takes a lot of time to do that. I can appreciate that, so thank you. Do we have any correspondences?
I don't believe any.
Okay. Any other matters not anticipated by the committee within 48 hours of posting? Okay, so future agenda items include next week, or excuse me, next school committee meeting, we'll be taking a vote on school improvement plans for 2016, '17, and this is all for the October 17th meeting. Presentation of MCAS and accountability data on October 17th as well, and an update on the superintendent's annual evaluation on October 17th. And I believe that's it. So now we need a whole call to executive session motion.
I make a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Mass General law, Chapter 38, Section 21A, Attention Number Two, to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel. The subcommittee will not return to open session.
Do you want to change that to the committee, the school committee?
The committee will not, the school committee will not.
Because we're not in session right now.